All right. I'm going to call to order the Tannenbaum School District voting meeting. We're going to stand for the pledge now.
I'd like to read this. It is a flag of the United States of America to the United States, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a roll call, Mr. Potts?
Okay. Mrs. Bytes. Mrs. Bytes. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Martinez?
Here.
Mr. Ojzenzalneal? Mr. Ojzenzalneal? Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Rathke?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Radarski?
Here.
And Mr. Wolf? Mr. Wolf.
Procedure for public participation. If you haven't done so already, we'd ask that you sign in in the back. And if there's anything you want to address the board about, simply come to the podium, put your name and address, state your name and address, and sign in on the sheet there. And you'll have three minutes to share what you want to share. Any agenda edits?
I have two, Mr. Scott. One I'd like to remove, item 7F. It's for salary adjustments. I'd like to remove that from the consent agenda and vote them separately. And the other is under new business. The thing that last time I gave a chance to speak about it, three minute time, I mentioned four minutes.
If we're removing 7F, are we removing it from consent agenda altogether and just calling it out separately? Is that all we've got?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Mr. Scott, consent items as well, J, K, and L. I don't feel that I can vote on those since I'm not here. So if we can pull them out separately.
Okay. All right. Any other edits? All right. Any presentations by public on agenda items? Seeing none. Do we have a motion for consent items as amended?
Make that motion for consent items, sub名as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Radarski, second by Mr. Martinez. All right. So it's 7A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, M, and N. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is it eight? Seven? Seven. Six.
Six.
Six, zero. All right. Do we have a motion for 7F?
Make a motion for 7F.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Radarski, second by Mr. Rathke. Any more discussion?
I just, I wanted to move it separately. Mr. Harris is aware of my objections to the salary adjustments in that the way they were developed, and I think some were too high and some were too low, so I just wanted to have it separate.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. This is for 7F. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
No.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
And Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Radarski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Five, one. All right. Do we have a motion for items 7, J, K, and L?
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rathke, second by Ms. Radarski. Do we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Potts?
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Radarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Second.
Mr. Scott? We need to skip right over to the consent agenda.
All right. We'll do it now. Sorry about that. Well, it's kind of distracting to have this light in my face, though.
Oh, we can do the presentation. Yeah. Yeah. We can go through the...
You sure? All right. All right.
Slacker, Ms. Radarski. You just look more nervous.
Item number eight, personnel consent items. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for items A through C.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rathke, second by Ms. Radarski.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Radarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Six, zero. Carry on.
All right. Item number nine, finance. Do we have a motion to approve items A and B?
Sub move.
Well, I could make a motion for A because I think there might want to be this. I don't take them separate because we want the discussion on A.
All right.
As far as the logo.
You okay with amending?
Retract my motion to take a motion to approve 9A.
Oh, I hear you saying a motion. I'm sorry. I'll second.
All right.
See, I'll second.
Do we have discussion on item 9A?
What Ms. Radarski had mentioned last week, my understanding is about $600 and some dollars for the logo on the curtain. You really need a logo on a side curtain that just blocks the leechers.
I was going to say. No.
No. No.
I don't think so.
Not at all. So that's why it's not to exceed.
So right. If we don't want the logo to exceed to make that.
No logo.
All right. Any other discussion? Do a roll call vote.
So then this is a vote to approve the curtain without, the screen without.
Do you want me, should we amend the, it was supposed to be covered with the not to exceed 6,500 from the on the status.
Maybe if you clarify, if you want to amend your, I'll second.
Mr. Rathke, do you want to amend your motion yet again?
Please.
All right. So we're going to add the without district logo.
Mr. Radarski?
Do we have a motion for 9B, rather?
We've got to vote.
We've got to vote again. Sorry.
We'll have to vote on 7A first.
We're going to re-vote on 7A as amended by Mr. Rathke. Let's try this again.
So, okay, Mr. Potts? Yes. Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Radarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Six, zero.
Are we sure?
We're sure.
All right. Do we have a motion for 9B?
Sub move.
Second.
First by Mr. Rathke, second Ms. Radarski.
I did have a question on the invoice. It says something about picking it up in a certain truck or something. Did I read that correctly? It said about that. I should go to it?
I know your question because I have the same question. It says that the lift cage required the cost will increase by $2,400. We don't know yet whether we're going to spend this $2,400 or not.
Do we have a fourth question?
Are we, are we picking it up? Somebody says it's a cat. It's not impressive.
We're picking it up. That's why the amount of 54,000.
Yeah, but it's asterisk here that if it's required, the cost will increase by $2,400. That should just be eliminated then if it's not going to take place. So then we're just voting on the $5,400.
Correct. So is that if they deliver in a lift cage truck, is that what we're going to get?
We have the truck pick it up. We're fine.
Okay.
My understanding, and per casing, is this is the dollar amount we're approving because it's not going to require the additional amount.
Okay. And I assume it's logo because I said this is the name, the dress, the distributor for this?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Rathke?
Actually, I'm sorry. I don't know. So... Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Radarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Six, zero. Motion carries.
Item 10, personnel. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for 10A, one or two.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Radarski, second by Mr. Martinez.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Radarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Six, zero. Motion carries. Six, zero.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for 10A, one or two.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Radarski, second by Mr. Martinez.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Radarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Six, zero. Motion carries.
Item 10, personnel. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for 10A, one or two.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Radarski, second by Mr. Martinez.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Radarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Ms. Radarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Six, zero.
And number, item 11, old business. Do we have a motion for Article A?
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Rathke, second by Ms. Radarski. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion passes. Six, zero. All right. And we'll now have a presentation on full day kindergarten.
So, thank you for reporting the opportunity to come and talk about our full day kindergarten program. I have Mrs. Markitroy and Mrs. Lattler here, our two teachers for full day. We want to also thank you for providing us the opportunity to offer the full day kindergarten to children that are demonstrating that need. Part of the presentation, you'll recognize, because a lot of sites are from the previous presentation, but we have updated to include data from the full day kindergarten program to see how they progress from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. So how can we identify them? How we identify them? We do a standardized assessment called the GURPS, which I'm giving you a copy of right now. When you look at it, you'll see that there are 13 mini-assessments that the children do. We set up appointments for them to come in May, and they meet with us, and they are assessed on the standardized assessment that you see in front of you. From that, we receive a standardized score. And if you look up here, you'll see the 16, 17 years olds, and then next to it, the 17, 18 years olds. And I just put a note at the bottom that just says that last year, we had a total of 42 students classified below level and 30 children who received full day. That was our last year. This year, we have 65 students below level and 30 who received full day. So you can kind of see a span from 16, 17. There were 18 above level, and this year, we have nine. Last year, we had 69 on level, and now we have 74. Last year, we had 29 below level, and 44 this year. 13 below level in 16, 17, and 21 this year. And that's just the copy of what you have in front of you. That's the assessment that we do give. And you can see that on that assessment, things are tested such as their academic, their cognitive development, their language development, physical development, early literacy, and math skills. Go to the next slide. This slide will look familiar. What was the goal of full day kindergarten? It's to fill in the learning gaps by using extra time and support, which will allow the students to catch up to their peers. This was the schedule that was put together to show the difference between what a half-day kindergarten and a full day kindergarten look like. And then we determined important measures and data collection that we wanted to have for the students going through the program. And we have highlighted that data in the next few slides. So if you just look through, we do the DIBELS three times a year, DIBELS proper monitoring monthly, the kindergarten screening based on the PA Common Core four times a year, the FNP assessments down to Seminale, the social and emotional checklist, which I also want to pass out, just so that you get to see that, that indicator as well. Thank you. The Go Math end of the year keynotes and math test, and the standards base report per three times a year. As we show the data, if you kind of think about the standards here below, think about a three as meeting the standard, a two as progressing towards the standard, and one as not meeting the standard at this time. And now we'll turn it over to the teachers to talk about that. So what we did was, we took that data, and the blue is where we were at the beginning in September, and then the reddish color was where we were at the end of the year for the letters and the letter sounds here on this screen. So we did the same screening again four times a year, where we just put the beginning and the end of the year. A three is where we'd like to see them, that means they've met the standard. Two is going towards that, and one is not there yet. So you can see the information there. And then also there are the letter sounds. So the wonderful thing is, we see lots of blue there at the end of the year, or lots of, lots of red there, and the three is the end of the year.
So if you look at the percentages, our children in September were mostly a one, 76% for letters. And at the end of the school year, 87% of our kids had met that standard for letters. As far as the letter sounds, if you look, there were no children who had met the standard in September for letter sounds. At the end, 87% of the children had met our standard for letter sounds, which is fantastic.
And to be, just in our kindergarten role, the two means we're missing a few sounds. It might be tricky sounds like the Y or the difference between a B and a D. To be a three, you really need to figure out all of them. So a two means they're close, there's a few missing.
It's still wonderful percentages.
Next, we have recognizing rhymes. So we would give them two words. Cat, bat, do they rhyme? Boat, dog, do they rhyme? At the beginning of the year, 23% could do that skill. At the end, 90% of our students could do that skill. And then their concepts of print is knowing how to read a book, from the beginning to the end, reading left to right, top to bottom, front to back, knowing the difference between a letter, a word, and a sentence, knowing all punctuation, periods, and exclamation points, and question marks, and all of those skills you need in order to read a book. That's what concepts of print is. So at the beginning of the year, again, we had 16% that understood how to use a book and use that book, and we are 100% of our students in our classes today.
So now we're looking at the DIBELS. This is a time test. It's one minute long. And the children, for first sound fluency, they're asked to give the first sound of a word. So if I say moon, they say mm. If I say sun, they say s. So at the beginning of the year, core, strategic, and intensive are the three categories. We want the children to be core. That's meeting the standard. So strategic is moving towards the standard, intensive is the not meeting the standard at this time. So in the beginning of the school year, in September, 27% of our children were core for this. Now, that is a lower number than what we have at the end of the school year. The score actually gets, it's harder for them to meet that standard. The score goes up. So 27% of kids met it in September, and it got even harder, but yet we still had 87% of our children meeting that standard at the end of the school year.
And I just double-checked on that. In September, they need to be able to do nine sounds in a minute. At the end of the year, they have to do 42 sounds in a minute.
I know. We have 87% of kids doing that. Letter naming fluency is where they have rows of letters mixed up, uppercase, lowercase. They need to be able to name as many as they can in one minute. Again, 27% of children were able to meet the score in the beginning of the school year. The score does get harder, and 84% of children were able to meet that number, which I believe is 62 if we're using the... Yeah. So they had to name 62 letters in a minute in order to meet core.
Now, Pons Seminale is our, the test that we use to test what is their reading level. So being able to read the book without teacher support, that they just get the book and able to read it without ever seeing it before, and then also being able to answer comprehension questions about it, remembering what was in the book, making personal connections to it. You have to be able to do it in order to have that as your reading level. So not just reading the words, but understanding it as well. At the beginning of the year, our goal is for them in kindergarten to be an A, and then we progress up to the end of the year, we'd like them to be a level D or E. The beginning of the year, we love for books that say, like, I like dogs, I like cats. At the end of the year, it has a much more complex sentence, usually two sentences on each type of book, because that would be E. Okay. So if it changes drastically what it is. And again, three is where is, means that they're on level. So in September, to be on level, they'd have to be able to read an A book, like I like dogs, I like cats type of book in order. The 58% in May, that were where we'd like them to be on reading level, was a much more complex book. Really, and just that Pons Seminale really says, they know all those skills can be applied. They know the letters, the sounds, they know the sight words, they can sound out words, and put all of those skills together into a book.
So our math skills are screened by our math interventionist as well as the special teachers. And the math interventionist actually uses a time test also to have kids qualified for Title I. So she does a one-minute time test, we're counting to 100, and for numbers 0 to 10. So in September, only 6% of our children could count to 100, and at the end of the school year, 94% of our children met that goal and met that standard and were able to count to 100, which is huge. It was a great accomplishment. And the number ID, identifying numbers from 0 to 10, again, it's just like the letters. They're, they're all at a border. It's all of the numbers from 0 to 10, and there's rows of them. The children have one minute to be able to identify those numbers as many as they can. And in the beginning of the year, again, it's a lower score, so 37% of our kids were core. At the end of the year, they're expected to be able to name many more, which I think it might be around the same as the letters, which is around 60, and 74% of our children could do that. So again, another great accomplishment for the kids.
In one of the get-outs we just gave to you, the second one that you got, this is where this information comes from. Beginning of the year, in September, it's filled out, and then it's filled out again in May on each student, and that's where all of these percentages come from. So beginning play skills is one of the first sections that you see on there. And in September, and there's about 10 different things, it's not just one question, but two, about 2% or at the end of the year, almost 80% had that, the social skills at the beginning of play. Flexibility, the section where you can read the questions that are on there, the pieces that are on there, 16% almost always at the end of the year, 77%. They made huge, huge accomplishments in our social skills, which we have social skills program that we do in Second Step, as well as many other lessons. We build in a social skills lesson every day on how to be a student, how to be a friend, about responsibility, self-care, and stuff like that.
So as you can see, intermediate play went from 13% to 77%. Our problem solving went from 6% to 67%, which is, is a wonderful skill for the children to have. You know, how do I handle this situation, and what can I do to change it for next time? So they have, they made great gains in, in a lot of these areas. Even the advanced play, you know, a lot of children in kindergarten have trouble with, you know, being able to lead in, in different play situations. A lot of our children at the end of the school year were very successful with the advanced play. Conversational skills, knowing how to address someone, how to use their words to solve a problem or to talk to a person instead of just getting upset. So they went from 17% to 77%, and 17% to 73%. So you can see, there are huge gains in, in all 30 of our children that we had last
Emotions, being able to control our strong emotions. We talk about having emotions and how we can take care of those and calm, self-comb ourselves. 13% at the beginning of the year to about 83% at the end of the year. And non-verbal conversational skills, understanding how somebody else is feeling. You know, we talk about using the expressions in spaces. That went from 20% to 70% that they were able to capture that.
Self-regulation is, is a pretty big one in kindergarten, being able to control one's emotions is, is a big one also. So they went from 17% to 73%. And compliments. It seems so simple, but yet it's something that we must learn. So hearing the children give out compliments for the purpose of making someone else feel better, or making someone else feel good, to make themselves feel good, you know, being a selfless thing is, is a beautiful thing to see in our classrooms. So they went from 20% to 80%, and they just love giving them out all the time.
And they're still giving them out in first grade, so I get to see the opportunity of them using those skills in first grade as well, which is really nice. And so I also want to point out, we do the Second Step curriculum, which is our social skills curriculum, but these teachers are teaching it in the moment all the time, modeling the behavior, giving, sharing words that the children need to use as they're communicating. So that constant immersion in that for full day, I think really makes a difference. So what is the timeline for full day kindergarten? The three-year pilot to gather data over the course of three years in order to show the benefits of continuing the program. Last year was our starting year, 16, 17, and then this year with the 17, 18 for the school year. And next slide is just some of the research that we found in doing the last presentation. So that's still up there, just showing how much those children can make in a full day kindergarten experience.
And I think it really happened. I mean, those scores are pretty significant for the children who came in knowing, you know, very little letters, sounds, and really those percentages that you saw were fantastic.
At what point do we have some follow-up on the kids that were in the program last year and how they're doing in first grade relative to their peers?
I could do a presentation with that, so you can see where they're, where they are now. And I think it would be important to continue to get that down the line, what, how are they doing in first grade, and how are they doing in second grade? So I can come back and do another presentation with that information.
Yeah. And did the, are the assessments done through all the kindergarten classes?
Yes.
So how do they, how do those percentages at the beginning of the year compare, and at the end of the year compare with the half-day kids?
So the same that you saw with the half-day?
Yeah, like I'm curious, is, you know, maybe the mix isn't as, maybe there's, maybe in the half-day class, there's fewer kids in the lower percentages, but, you know, are the improvements as drastic as what we see in the full day? You know, meaning, at the end, they're very similar, and they're four, they're all, you know, equally prepared for first grade, and then it'd be interesting to see that, and then relative to how they're doing in first grade against their peers.
Do you have any sense that she shared that she doesn't just say, none of her Title I, beginning of the year, were our targets? So our math interventionist does a screening in the beginning of the year, and as of that first month, at least, in September, none of our children were being seen for math intervention support for Title I. So of all 30 kids, so I thought that was a pretty, pretty nice, you know, little tidbit that she shared with us, so I was really excited about that.
But you have to remember, the part of the purpose of this was to have these 30 kids catch up to the rest of the caregivers.
Yeah, that's right.
And then when I got to first grade, they were all in a level playing field.
And we can get you data, but more than one person has said that our kids are holding their own in first grade, so I'm hoping that continues.
Well, I'm not questioning it, I just, to me, the proof is in not just what they did in kindergarten, but then how they're doing in first grade.
I think it'd be very helpful to see the comparison to the half-day students as well. And do we keep the same metrics for first grade as well? Or it seems like we'd be very helpful.
We use the devils, we use partial monitoring, but it's different tests about taking it in first grade and second grade.
But we're capturing the same type of information that could help.
Reading skills, yes, and math skills.
Thank you. Before they finish, I just want everybody to know, I wanted to record, how much credit Mrs. Mark Troy and Mrs. Lottner deserve for this whole program. For those of you that work on the board, the previous superintendent had mentioned at West Kindergarten a lot of times, but we never really did anything with it. And I met Mrs. Mark Troy and Mrs. Lottner through my grandmother, who was in kindergarten. And the summer after my grandmother finished kindergarten, I met with the two within Michael's diner and said, "You explain to me what I, at West Kindergarten did," and they did. And I said, "Would the two of you be willing to put something together to present to the board, maybe represent the company?" So they did, and later that summer, they met again at Michael's diner with Mrs. Hefter and Mr. Early, who was the acting superintendent of the company. So they've got all this together, sold it to Mrs. Hefter and Mr. Early, then sold it to the board, and have worked with it since day one. So this is their baby, and I'm sure they're very proud of it, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for sharing what you do, and a couple observations I was looking for. Actually, maybe thinking about it, maybe just seeing what some of the kids, I was actually wasn't expecting quite as ready to be as proficient in the beginning, but maybe they're only proficient in one thing, and the other areas, they're lacking. And some of them are actually starting out, and some areas are okay.
Yeah, some of the scores are a little bit lower, too, at the beginning of the year, so I think they did need to have some strength here and there.
And they were all there, I mean, they all had some academic needs, but they're there for different reasons. You know, there's some behavioral things, some social things, some, you know, some of their bodies, their body functions, you know, like, they all kind of have their own reason, you know, and they all took some of the strength, and they took off. It was amazing, it was awesome.
And obviously, a question, I assume the ones that don't quite get to be proficient, you're sharing that in first grade, or if they're going in first grade, maybe where they're a little extra on that.
Yes.
I shouldn't have, but.
I was just gonna say that another reason to see what the other, the half-day kids are is, you know, are we identifying the at-risk kids accurately? Meaning, if we have too many that are higher up on the chart that didn't need to be there, and we missed some that were in half-day that should have been in the full day?
And even right now, there are two that are moving into the program, two moved out, so about two within. And so what we do is we'll look at our data, we don't look back at the begins now, because weeks have run by, so we want to see what are they actually doing in the classroom? How are they performing with reading, with math, and see which children need interventions, so that.
Yeah, what else I just thought of, and it wasn't part of their presentation, but if you think about it in terms of Mr. Harris' one-boom concept, how well the first graders and all the sustainability. So when they finished the full-day kindergarten, they're still in the same building, not spread out into three different rooms.
So we had, we did have enough spots for all the kids initially, who two moved out, so did all the kids who weren't eligible, or were, we thought would benefit, know that they were, that they couldn't use fully, they were down on the spots? Or they, so my question, the two that moved out, you go, so how do you approach the parents now that, hey, we have an open now because?
I apologize, I apologize, and I just explained, and they were not, one of them, I don't even think did this for me in the mid, so we're just looking straight at the data for the whole grade level, and determining, you know, which students are getting interventions and not making progress despite continuing, and trying this intervention.
Yeah, that's offering, it's obviously up to the parents if they want to, if they don't, and if not, then we want to, that's the next one behind them.
So if we don't have, get a room for all the children who are, if I could work down from, like, lowest scores, now, is that how?
Right, like, we look at the lowest scores, and then we just look down the line, and then draw the line, and say, in fact, we had some sets of plans where one was in, one was out. So we call the parent, explain, you know, one child qualified, one child didn't, with both of those cases, they prefer to keep them out. So we'll just continue monitoring the progress in the half-day program, just making sure that they're making that progress despite continuing. So that's how we do it, say, 30 is the cutoff. So we started with 15 and 15, and then two moved out, and two moved in. Thank you very much.
All right, running item 12, new business. Mr. Martino? I asked people in the beginning to sign in the back. Yeah, for the members in the public that are here, if you haven't signed in the back, we ask you please do so before you leave. Thank you.
As I say, I don't know if this may be within three minutes or not, so.
I'm gonna go with no.
Tonight, in my last meeting as a member of the board, I want to reflect on the past three years. I never intended to run for the school board, but with no other taxpayer activist standing up as a candidate, I felt I had little choice. My first two years are very gratifying, doing this for not only establishing Everest Kindergarten and increasing the number of AP courses while at the same time not raising school property taxes. The last two years sadly seem to be a return to signing labor contracts we couldn't afford and spending money we didn't have, and then raising taxes to cover the resulting deficit. Mostly tonight, I'd like to acknowledge and discuss some of the people I've been involved with, realizing there's not enough time to mention everyone. First, I need to thank my wife for putting up with the amount of time I was devoted to the board, and for the aggravation she endured reading some of the nonsense in social media, especially the private pages. Second, I want to thank the people who elected me to the board, namely the taxpayers of this district. And third, I want to thank all the teachers my granddaughters had for four years in Daniel Flynn School District, they've given her a great start in the academic portion of her young life. I want to acknowledge the following people, and I wrote this before I was sure they were going to be here, with Mrs. Mark Troy and Mrs. Lottner, Kimmy Hahn, and the teachers who educated me on the benefits of Everest Kindergarten, that convinced the administration to establish it and to admit it a reality success. Connor Curtis, Connor's helped me in the running for the school board to help me get elected. I watched Connor grow from a high school senior to a college graduate, now with a career in Washington, DC, while serving the educational needs of our students and holding the high end school property taxes. Carol Bites, Carol ran at the same time I did, although in a different voting district. While Carol and I didn't agree on everything in that four-year period, I respect that she never lost sight of her constituents and fun heart with the taxpayers of this community. She was also subject to some condescension and segregation, verbal abuse from other board members, none of which had been permitted, but she always kept her head up. Rob Early, Rob Fulden, I agree with Lee, is the acting superintendent, but the then superintendent unexpectedly bailed out on us with little notice, and Rob now serves as the equal deputy of Jim Harris. Jim Harris, I've watched him grow into the position of superintendent, and will not yet complete the finished product, is already the best superintendent the school district has since I moved here in 2003. I believe the future is bright with Jim at the helm. Lauren Small, after Lauren's interview, I was asked by Connor what I thought, and my response was that Lauren would be capable, but not a superstar. I couldn't have been more wrong. Lauren discovered so many financial discrepancies, and said, "Wonder if we ever passed a prior financial audit." He not only corrected those discrepancies, but put systems in place to recover recoverments. He saved this district untold amounts of money, and is currently a chief financial officer superstar. Larry Speed, Larry assisted me in my campaign to be elected to the board, and later was appointed to fill a board vacancy. Larry's irreverent dry humor kept the executive sessions interesting, but more important than that, Larry was an ardent advocate for the taxpayers of this community. And lastly, Andrew Basil, I consider it an honor and a privilege to serve in the board with Andrew. He was a mentor to me, even before my election, and to many of the other board members as well. Upon his election to the board 10 years ago, he had to deal with many backroom deals, unnecessary spending, unsustainable contracts, and exorbitant school property tax increases. He changed most of that and eliminated much of the waste of spending that would discourage the local taxpayers. Earlier this year, I nominated Andrew for the Wall of Honor, and it's a travesty he wasn't selected after devoting eight years of his life to this district. The property taxpayers of this community are already seeing the effects of Andrew and Larry not being re-elected to the board, and over the next several years will ruin that decision even more. One final thought to the returning and incoming board members, it will be unfair to the property taxpayers of this community for you to again spend money you don't have and sign contracts you can't afford, then turn around and again raise already too high school property taxes with the excuse you're worried about future deficits. You don't improve education by throwing money at them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Any presentations by the public on any of the issues?
Just gotta have a couple things, ready?
Oh, sorry.
Wanted to first thank Mrs. Rexrode on the How Many Touchable Lions Love, sponsoring the Peace Poster Contest again this year, and Mills School did great. Proficient after writing us artists, unfortunately, the winning one is not here, not went to our district, and I haven't heard who won yet, so we'll see. Last year, we came in second, the Springfield County Lions won, and that actually, that lady came in, she was one of the annual mentions, brought by, so she actually was, we're a very good poster, and she actually got some money out of that, so again, thanks to Mills School, the Lions love to do that, and hopefully the kids have some fun doing that. I also have a question, just one item I know. Nice to hear your floor is Mr. Schreit. But the one item for that was brought to our attention here, I was curious, the AM AC is using our, allowed to use the turf field for soccer, which, and I had, the AC has, has a ton of fields, they're looking at it, they need to use it, but I know I keep seeing week after week that our turf field is going to be, is in desperate need of replacement soon, so I'm wondering why we're allowing more usage of it, you know, we're trying to get that thing to last a little longer, so. We've already, we've already agreed with it most likely, so just bring it, maybe Mr. Schreit's attention as to why the Lions actually stopped, and he reading about is how they shaped the field sometimes.
Thank you.
Laurie Ho, Mother of Pennsland, Douglasville. I am on speaker, I just came to listen tonight, I didn't realize they were going to be talking about kindergartens, so I felt the need to come up and speak. My daughter is graduating this year, and she had Mrs. Mark Troy in the very first all-day kindergarten class. So I've had the experience of living in our district for 27 years, I've worked in kindergarten admission for the last 11 years in our district for those students who weren't able to get into the full-day kindergarten and come for an admission program at the end of the day as their half-day. So I got two other students who, children of mine, who were in half-day kindergarten that were all-day, and I've been able to see the difference that goes from a student who started as an all-day kindergartner and one that were half-day. So I am employing for our board to really consider moving forward in the future that we get back to all-day kindergarten for all of our students. There is a huge difference between the half-day and the all-day, and I hope that when Mrs. Hefter provides the statistics for you and what is going on between the half-day and the full day, and those that have graduated up to first grade. One of the biggest things I think that I have noticed is that social skills that they're not really not getting in a half-day, the way they self-confident, their improved writing skills, their critical thinking skills, and how they deal with different things. A lot of things that I hear from parents today in first and second graders is they have a really hard time going and transitioning at a full-day, and they're completely, they get frustrated quickly, they don't want to do their homework, they feel overwhelmed, and I think it's because they didn't learn some of those skills at an earlier age, and it's just about time. Having that time in kindergarten all day to develop those skills is the foundation that the children need to get them through first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and all the way up to graduating here at the end of the year. So in the process of trying to improve our district, really consider that we need to start at the bottom again and bring back all-day kindergarten. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen Gold, 443 Mill Road, in Douglasville. Mr. Martino. I want to thank you for your service for your four years that you served on board. I've lived in the district for over 20 years, and in past years, I've been very involved with various boards on different levels, but I honestly haven't seen anyone who's worked harder or been more dedicated for both the district and the students that you leverage. Nobody here understands, other than his wife, truly the hours that this man has spent studying, researching any given subject before he was willing to render a vote. I'm hoping that the returning board and the new members coming into the board do not return to the spending frenzy and your rational, fiscal irresponsibility that we've had in previous boards back in the mid-2000s, because their decisions are what have put us in the predicament that we're in today with our finances. But Mr. Martino, thank you for your service, and know that at least from the taxpayers' point of view, your voice of reason will be sorely missed. Thank you.
Seeing, I'm going to move the motion to adjourn.
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Well, as we always do, I'd like to embarrass three school directors. Mr. Potts?
Yeah.
I'd like to thank you for your service.
Great.
Mr. Tardowski?
On down.
No, I dropped Richard early.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to the man who was board president who hired me, who called me every night just to chat.
Is this funny?
No.
You know, thank. And like, like, like the woman, like she said, he puts in more hours, more work, anyway. Whenever there's a meeting, an invitation that goes out, or back-to-school event, he is there. And full-day kindergarten, I know he was championing it, and others thought he was cutting programs, he was really trying to support. And we joke all the time, we like to be hated. He does. And I said, and he's good at, but he has great ideas, and he doesn't let the public know. He has a huge heart. And I'm really, 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 I'm here. I know you'll be here, but I can just lock you out.
Are you going to move the adjourn?
The vote?
Meeting adjourned.